You got any changes? I've got one change I wanted to do, but y'all go ahead and look. We've got Alex, he's going to talk to us tonight about this CARE, the CARES Act money, the money we've got, and he wants to talk to us a little bit about it. It might be something we want to put on the consent agenda. So, Will.
Mr. Chairman, please, I request a ban on block care land.
Okay. All right. You got that bit? Okay. All right. Okay, that's all. Any other changes?
No.
All right. Not good enough. All right. Okay, everyone had time to look at our previous minutes?
Yes.
Everybody on board with that? Okay. All right. All right, before we go to board appointments, and I've got something we want to do tonight. We've got, you know, Don has been out for a while, you know, with his wife and all, and we've got him here tonight just for a few minutes because he sure don't want to be exposed and take that back home. But we've got a little thing here we want to present to Don tonight. We've got people from all over, believe it or not, all over the state of Georgia watching this work session tonight because of Don, and he don't know anything about this. But Don was actually voted Clerk of the Year for the whole state of Georgia. And he don't know that. It's a pretty big award, I tell you. This is good. This is a special thing right here. Not everybody gets this. But it just says presented by Patrick Don Townsend Jr., Clerk of the Year of 2020 for outstanding performance and professionalism in government, Dade County, Georgia. So it's a big deal, you know. Normally, this is actually awarded at the convention in Savannah that you go to every year. This was actually right before COVID. Well, we didn't have it, but it was right when it started. And so they did make your choice. They didn't know really what they were going to do as far as presenting it to them, so they sent it up here to us. And we really was trying to do it at other meetings, but, you know, the COVID's been so bad, you know, it was kind of uncomfortable, especially for you. And now, you know, you've got a little breathing time here, so we just want to do this, okay? And, you know, just everybody appreciates you and all the work you do and all, and we're just proud of you, okay? All right. Yeah. I'll hold them out for you.
Yeah, let's try to social distance, right? It's good to be back in this room. I left on my phone to take care of my lawn and Lisa. And it's been a hard go at it, you know, but I appreciate Rebecca greatly, Shout out to Lena and her, and Carrie Anderson, and Mary, and Sherri, and Melissa, and everyone in the whole dang gang, you know. But also, since we got other clerks watching, I love my clerks, you know. There's not many male clerks, so they've kind of adopted me and taken me in over the last 13 years. But I appreciate all the clerks across the state of Georgia, and I thank you for this honor. And I'm very appreciative of, I'm so thankful. I wanted to be able to work in Dade County, you know. It's just an honor to work in Dade County. But to work for this Board of Commissioners, I really, truly am grateful and very thankful. Ted's just an awesome person to work with, you know, and...
I gave him $20 to pull this out.
He did. I did.
Turn that in on my phone.
But everyone, all the commissioners, I'm just very thankful. Y'all have been very helpful, and all the prayers from all the people in Dade County. We've got people praying around the world, we've heard, so the entire globe, and we appreciate that. Lisa is fighting, in the fight of her life, and I don't know anyone in this room that's not been touched by cancer, but it's just something that, just continue to pray for her and me. And we thank you, and we thank the clerks and the ACCG and the Georgia Clerks Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don.
There's some clerks we have to say to Georgia.
You don't take this week, take that, whatever. See you, Don.
Mr. Chairman, that is out of 159 counties.
I tried. Let's move down to board appointments and proclamations. For A, this is, actually, I did go with the personnel status, we'll go back to that. But the Purple Heart Day through the American Legion is August the 7th. That's something we've done several years here in a row. Everyone fine with that, put it on the consent agenda, okay? All right. Now, on our board appointments to our heavy industry and special use permit board, has anyone got any positives on that? I've talked to three different people of my own that said they would not serve on it, didn't want to do that. I have one I felt possibly would today, but he didn't, said he wouldn't do it.
Mr. Chairman, I talked with David Young, who served with First Form Committee and lives in Rising Pond, in property in Rising Pond, and he said he would be willing to serve.
All right, good. That's one more we got. One more down. You got anybody there that you...
I'm still, I've got three people I'm working with, and I'm trying to get convinced that that's what they need to do.
Okay. Alan, you got...
I don't know if I can do this, but it's my nephew, Chris Bradford, said he would be glad to do that, work on that, but let me talk to him a little bit more, make sure that we're getting everything.
So you want to be sure before we put him on?
Yes, yes. But I think he'll take it, I'm sure he will.
Well, by next meeting then, we need to wrap it up by the next meeting and have this board together. So we'll go ahead and, hopefully, if everyone's fine with it, we'll do David Young, and there'll be two members on it. So if you want to, put that on the consent agenda, okay? All right. All right, let's move down to, let's go back to review of personnel status, if y'all haven't looked that over. Not been any great changes. We have picked up one down at the park, and that was Stacy filled a slot down there. And Billy, I think we have one, I think it was, that was before our last meeting, though. There's not been a tremendous amount of changes at all.
Nine eleven.
Yep, nine eleven.
You lost two?
One. So you're looking, okay, for enough, okay. All right, that's in 911. All right. Any questions? Okay. All right, move down to number five. Any splash or capital equipment approvals? That's not any tonight. Number six, this is the RFP results, countywide property reassessment and evaluation. Paula Duval, she's here tonight. She's our chief appraiser for the tax office.
We did send out an RFP because this is a large amount of money to advertise, and we had set out there for two weeks. It was on the county website, it was on our website, we had applications in the commission office and in our office. But after all those two weeks, we got one bid. And this is the company that started our work last year, that we had worked with us last year, so I'm pleased with it. I'm, you know, perfectly fine with who did put in their bid. Their bid came in at 68.5, so that is a little below the 75 we were anticipating. So I feel very confident with this company. I have no, nothing negative to say about them, and I think they'll do us a really great job. They did our, last year, when we changed the dollar per square foot and the base area, all the changes we made last year, they were the company that we used when we did our digest review last year. So, and Terry McCormick, who is the CEO of this company, is very familiar with this county. He and another gentleman would come almost every year and help us with our digest, so he's familiar with the county, he knows all of us in the office, so I feel very confident that he'll do a really good job for us.
And you got to when to have that down? What...
Well, my requirement was by the 2021 digest, so by May of next year, when we send out assessment notices, it should be complete. And that's in their proposal, that they will have all that completed by the time assessment notices are mailed out.
Okay. All right. All right. That's good. Any questions for her now? All right. Thank you. Before you leave, I've got one, Mr. Moore here, he's got a question. Come on up, Walter, while you're here. While you're on, you know, he's just, he's got this question that he wants to talk about, and you may want to talk to him in the office, but he's just got some concerns, and while you're here, well, you know...
My name's Walter Moore, I just...
Turn around here where we can see.
Oh, well, I don't know her, I don't...
Yeah, I told you, don't get nervous, we're here, we're all from here, and just tell us what's on your mind, that's what...
Well, I got a house up on the bluff, there's actually three of them, but my taxes on one house in particular, and I don't have my numbers straight, but my values went up over $100,000 in this last tax session. I've done nothing to improve my house, or, and I've got two other houses that, one of them is really just went downhill. I mean, and the va, I know I'm paying over $500 a month taxes. I mean, I don't really know exactly what I'm paying, but now with all this other increase, and I guess I'm just concerned why it went up and where our money's going.
But your appraisal went up, right?
My appraisal, right. My taxes, I'm sorry, my appraisal. So, I mean, if appraisal goes up, taxes go up, don't you?
Yeah. Paula, what you got on, I mean, can you comment on that tonight? I mean, exactly, you know, I know you probably don't know the partial or whatever.
That's what we was pulling up, you've got three parcels on brown.
Okay.
Well, Neil, I would have to see everything, you know, look on our computers to see what exactly changed, what increased. But you did have 45 days when we sent you that assessment notice to come in and appeal at and to, you know, disagree with that value, but we received no appeal, so...
Well, that's probably true.
We couldn't make any change anyways.
Is it the new house, Walter, the new...
Yeah, the license, right.
Yeah, 19, it was 235.
Right, now it's what, 300 and...
330.
So you added a new house, is that...
Well, I just bought another house and moved in it, I mean, but, and the one house, I mean, how about the first one, it was 24.70. I mean, that house, the roof's about to fall in, I just bought it, hey. So I'd be particular who my neighbors was, I guess, but anyway, I mean, the value even went on there, and it's, I mean, it's...
But we don't know that, he's going to come and tell us.
Well, I mean, y'all come up in the appraisals, somebody should...
But it's also your responsibility, when you get your assessment notice and you see your value, that is the time you demonstrate...
Well, I'm out working in daylight, start paying taxes, I guess.
It's more happy to send you an appeal for or anything like that, but any time you come and talk to us.
Well, that's what I was going to say, why don't you just come there in the morning, go back there and sit down and talk to her, and y'all look it over and see what's going on, you know. That's the only way to do it, get the numbers and look at it, you know, and...
Look at what's changed, but you look at it and see what the...
And see just exactly what, I mean, $100,000 is a lot of money, I mean, to go up...
It is, I mean, the way you'd go up, I don't believe in it, I mean, mow the grass.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On the, when we went to square footage, Paula...
I'm sorry?
When we went to square footage, basically what it done, the reason it went up so much is it was at $60 a square foot, and then we went to like $80 a square foot, is that what? So what they done is they took...
But I couldn't really know.
Right.
Because there's three houses on there, and all three of them, you know, increased because of that $1 per square foot, and yet it's possible.
Can you do it, or you want to do it Monday, or you don't do it...
Monday or Sunday, I can...
Well, just say Monday, because you'll be here around the morning, and just come in there and go back there and sit down and look and see, get an answer, see, well, I mean, I don't know, but she can, she's got the numbers, and she's got comparisons and all, she can look at it, whatever, you know, and see. Okay.
But it's not going to do any good this year. Well, my wife keep working, thinking, nah. And I got one other complaint.
Okay. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you. Economic development, what we got to get out of it in our county?
Well, that's...
Tax dollars get spent on it, and I hadn't, I mean, if somebody could show me what economic development...
Well, what you're talking about is the Joint Development Authority. That's the one in Walker County that actually we're a member of. Economic, or Dade Economic Development, that's different, that's our county, I mean, that's people, but you're talking about the JDA.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's something that would take a majority of the commission, you know, to vote to pull out, you know. What we get for benefit, you know, over the years, you know, they've promoted the county, supposedly, they promote the county throughout the United States, throughout the world. The tax incentives that we get from the, for the people that work at the plants down here, and for the incentives, you know, for the, we, the state would not do that unless we are part of an industrial, a joint development authority. They don't count our development, it's got to be a multi-county. And that's something, you know, that if the commission wants to look at, of course, you know, we're in it till after the first of the year anyway, I mean, you know, but if that's something that they want to explore, we've looked at it before, and we've said, okay, what have you done for us this year? What have you done for us in the last two years? And they come and lay it out, and then we can make that decision, you know.
Well, I mean, I really wasn't aware of it, and I'm sure a lot of the people in our community's not aware of it either till election, I mean, y'all know how I become aware of it, but still, I found out a lot of facts I didn't like.
Yeah, yeah. And that's something we can do, I mean, that's not, you know, you need to reevaluate every so often anyway, in about every two years or so, you know, actually, we've asked them to come at least three, I think it's four times a year, every quarter, and give us a report of what they're doing, and he's due next, well, this is August, be our next meeting.
Yeah.
So if you want to come back, and we'll have people in the room here to talk about it, and they can lay it online, just what have they done for Dade County in the past year, okay?
All right. I appreciate it.
I appreciate you coming down, okay?
Appreciate y'all letting me talk.
All right. And the reason I went ahead and brought Walter on up here, because Paula's had, she's going to leave, and I wanted her to be here to answer his questions. Normally, what we'll do on this is down at the bottom, we'll have a, you know, have people talk, you know, but I didn't want her to get away because she probably had, you know, answers to these questions.
Fine.
I didn't know what time he was going to come in, Walter, you know, but, all right. She answered the questions on this, or actually gave us that for information, I'll see. Number seven, the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee update. Ms. Carrie Anderson, if you'll do that for us, I appreciate it.
I hope you can all see this. It says Census 2020. Does everybody see it? And we've also got up some banners, for those of you who need reminders to do your census. So we need everybody to be counted in Dade County. I'm going to show you this, and I hope that Patrick and Alex can kind of get a photo of this, a close-up of this. You can also find this on our website at www.dadecounty-ga.gov. This is how to complete your census. For those of you who do not know this, this thing right here is called a QR code. Josh Engel, who is a member of our Complete Count Committee, got that for us. If you will hold your phone up to this, it will, just using your camera, take you exactly to the right page where you need to go to fill out your census. It doesn't get any easier than that, so just click the QR code, go do your census. It takes about three to five minutes, depends on how many people you have living in your home. If you don't have a smartphone or a computer like these that we have, you can also call this number right here on the front, it's 1-844-330-2020. You can just complete your census on the phone. So if you have a landline, pick it up, pick up your handset, call that number, 1-844-330-2020, and complete your census. So a few of the things that we're doing to try to get people to help make Dade count, we're trying to give updates once a week. We do a Dade County weekly update at 3:00, where we talk about county business. On that update, we have also spoken about the census and how important it is to do the census. And here are a few of the reasons that it is important to do the census. The census is done every 10 years, and it's only done every 10 years, which means it is planning 10 years in the future. So this census will affect us all the way to 2030. So think about all the growth that could happen in Dade County in 10 years. And if we don't have adequate numbers in the census, we're not going to get the kind of funding from the federal government needed to sustain that growth and to help that growth. Some of the things that census money is used for are things like grants for our teachers. So if you are a big supporter of teachers, make sure to fill out your census, it helps them get grants for continuing education. It helps with things like roads and bridges, federal grants, emergency aid and supplies, Medicaid, SNAP. So these are all things that will be affected by the census. Another really, really great reason to do the census is it's in the Constitution, Article 1 of the Constitution. So that's a very important thing that our forefathers thought to put in there just for us to do the census to be counted. So please, please, use this fancy QR code that Josh Engel with the Dade County School System got for us, or call this number, 844-330-2020, to do that. Also on the screens, if you can see up front or in the back of the room, this is our website, dadecounty-ga.gov. This is our Census 2020 page, so it has all the information that you might need for the census. So if you have not been able to write this down, you can always check it out on our web page, our website. We also share it on social media. So if you have any questions, you can call me directly at 423-290-6655. If you need help filling out the census, you'd like to do it online on a computer, but you need help, we ask you to go to the Dade County Public Library, where Marshana Sharp will be more than happy to help you fill out your census. We also have some free census swag like this, and some of our commissioners have Census 2020 cups and hand sanitizer up there, so we have some goodie bags that you can have if you fill your census out online. So for questions, go to the library or give me a call. Thank you so much.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a, I figured you'd talk about the door-to-door, this is starting.
Yes.
And maybe you sent us a picture of what they would look like.
That's true. So thank you for reminding me about that, I should have mentioned that. So beginning initially, the census was supposed to have been completed April the 1st. With COVID, that changed. They gave us a timeline of October 30th, 31st to complete the census. They have rolled that back. The final date now for the census to be complete is September the 30th. So we are at 52.8%. And I'm really, really happy, I'm going to do a little cheerleader moment, I'm very happy we've gone up by over 1% in one week of participation in the Dade County area, so we're very happy about that, but we're at 52.2%. Another thing, the census said because of COVID-19, they were not going to send census takers door-to-door, and as recently as last month, they were saying we will not be sending people door-to-door. When they rolled back the date from October 31st, they changed it to September 30th. They decided to go ahead and put census takers in the field. So on our social media page, we shared a picture of what those census takers should look like. They have a bag, let me see if I can just pull it up for you, on our Facebook page, which is Dade County, Georgia, all spelled out. You can be notified when we go live or when we're doing something. So let me see if I can find that post for you. And, well, it's not coming up. Rebecca, are you on there?
No.
I don't think you are. Let me see if I can find, I just shared it this morning. If you see it, feel free to share it, or, anyway. The people that you will see have bags that say census taker, so they'll have a census taker bag on there, they will have a device with them like this. It may on the back have something that says census taker as well. They'll have a badge like this. This is just a lariat that they gave me as a volunteer, but they'll have something that says U.S. Census Bureau. They will have a tag, please, if you feel uncomfortable, ask for their identification. They should be clearly identifiable. They will be in the field going door-to-door, and they will begin that this Saturday, August the 8th. So that's two days away. So if you've had somebody at your house before now claiming to be a census taker, they're not, they're not. Now, the Census Bureau does partner with other survey companies, so always ask to seek, if you have any questions, call the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department. They are aware that there are census takers who will be in the field this weekend and from here until September 30th. So please know that they will be there. See if we can find it here.
Are they census takers, are they local people, or are they probably in from somewhere else?
Some of them are, some of them are not. Ah ha, Jennifer found it for us. Thank you, Jennifer, and I found it at the same time. So here we are, I don't know if you guys can see this, Alex and Patrick, but it is on our Dade County, Georgia Facebook page, so I'm going to walk it over a little bit so you guys can see.
You've hit the 10.
What it looks like, can you see that? I know it's tiny, but that's what it looks like. So they will be clearly identifiable. So if you have any questions, call, call the local police, they'll know, but they will also be masked, so, but here's the easy thing, if you don't want somebody coming to your house, fill it out online. So if you don't want somebody coming to your door, to knock on your door, call the number 1-844-330-2020, or go online and fill it out, okay? Call with questions. Do you guys have any more questions?
No. Okay.
Thanks.
I read something that said they were going to...
It was eight to five, wasn't it? Eight to five, what I saw.
Then I heard that, and I said, read something, and I knew, said they were going to be offered extra, and sending a lot of hours trying to get this to be talked about.
It does not say the hours in here, I'm sure they will set those, but just so you know, will they be local people, sort of local? Typically, what they do is they'll train people in Northwest Region, so people from Dade, Chautauqua, Floyd, I think Alex McAlpin, who does all the video for K-Win, he's going to be one of the census takers, he just went through training. So there's a very likely chance that you'll know who's coming to your door, so, thank you.
All right. Good report. All right, let's move down to number eight. This is the ordinance 07-02-20. This is the meaning to ABC ordinance to permit Sunday package sales. We have actually eight and nine, but, now, Robin, is this the final reading?
This is.
This is the final reading, okay. Everybody fine with that, number eight? Okay. Number nine, this is ordinance 08-06-20, and this is a meaning ABC ordinance to permit Sunday sales of alcohol beverages for on-premise, on-premises consumption. So this is a final reading. Everybody fine with that? Okay. And as I want to point out, this was voted on by the voters and passed by a big margin of voters here, and this is a process we have to go through to legally make this binding, so that's what we, and this is the final reading. All right, let's move down to...
Mr. Chairman...
Yes, sir.
...I was asking maybe for, do you know, Robin, if the alcohol board is set for this, when they're set for it to begin, like, will it be Sunday? Or we're going to be asked when it's going to start?
Yeah. No, I've spoken with...
Your question.
Is she here? No, and I understand that what they're going to do is that they've already issued licenses prior to these two ordinances, and they're going to just allow those, holding those licenses to go ahead and go forward. So I think it happens immediately.
Sunday.
Yeah, Sunday, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just know we're going to be, probably be asked by soon, when it's going to start, now that it's been done.
No, I had asked whether they intended to issue new licenses for the Sunday sales, and they had indicated to me they were not, they were just going to go with what they have.
Okay. All right. Let's move down to the number 10. This is the amendment of our local timber ordinance to codify state law updates made by the General Assembly. This is something that we're just, you know, we look at every so many years, but as the General Assembly does make changes, we blend it in with our local ordinances. Anybody got any questions on that?
The only thing I had, and I talked to Robin about it, was they only given a $5,000 bond, and they left $10,000 worth of mess on the side of the mountain here about four or five months ago, but he says we can't change it. I guess that's a state mandate as far as timber's concerned.
It is. The state statute that was amended, it require, it affected, the provision said that the local ordinance shall conform to and shall not exceed the state statute, so we're kind of stuck with what the state gives us. We are allowed to file suit against them and try to seek additional money from them through litigation, but as far as the bonding required on the front end, we're stuck with 5,000.
And if we've had trouble out of them before, if there's something, if there's...
If, if the $5,000 bond that they previously posted has been withdrawn, you can, you can increase it to, I think, 10, and it goes up from there.
I know they left a huge mess out there, and I think everybody knows that and saw it, you know? I paid two kids to go in there and cut up some of the wood, you know, to make it look better, but it's a shame that they didn't clean that mess up.
So pretty much what we're, we're voting strictly on the state, the General Assembly, what they have added to this.
Yes, although tonight, what I would suggest is there's, the way that the statute is written, there were some provisions that went into effect immediately upon the governor's signing, which I think was on July the 26th. Most provisions go into effect in October. So what I would suggest, honestly, is that we take this up for first reading in September and then for second reading in October, when the statutory provisions, amendments go into effect. So I don't, there's, there's nothing that's really required on it tonight.
Okay, that's good, that's good.
My question is, I'm back on here, so this is, this is the state's ordinance, and we just copying it?
State statute, yes.
Because GH and I, you know...
Why'd you say "I'm sorry"?
On this, on this, here, you go back here on 51-07, and then GH and I, I mean, who's going to determine, who sets them rules, or who's, who's the determining factor in that?
Uh, I'm not sure I, I know what GH, are you looking at our current ordinance or the new state statute?
This one that's in here.
Yeah, let me see.
You got it?
Oh. Yeah. So what I, what I've done is I have circulated around a proposed initial amendment to those. Be sure, be sure that you have those, but, uh, I'm talking about GH and I, is that a particular provision, such, yeah? That, that section's been rewritten, I meant to say.
It's been rewritten? Okay. I had any issues with that, so, okay.
Any other questions?
But anything like that, it'd be like that with our code enforcement officer being like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I still feel like that's overstepping our bounds.
But it may have changed.
Right, so, okay.
All right. And move down to number 11. This is historical, historic monuments and marker protection. Lamar, your name's on this, you, you got anything to add to it?
Robin has, the State Assembly passed a...
Talk in your mouth, leave it in there.
I think the State Assembly...
Yeah.
Must not be on.
It'd be dead. Hey, Lamar.
The State Assembly, they, they passed a law on protecting statues and monuments, so this is going to be kind of like the same thing with the timber ordinance. We'll probably pass on it this week and this month, and then in September, we'll have our first reading and our second reading to bring it up to standard. And it's basically still going to be a misdemeanor, which me and Alan both talked about, we're not happy about it, but the timber ordinance, we can't go above and beyond.
Yeah.
But there is a provision in there that if destruction is done to any monument or statue, that you can get three times the recovery of what it costs, so maybe that'll help.
All right. So there's no, really no movement tonight, would you say? But we'll, we'll address it in September and October?
It'll go into effect in October.
Okay.
Yeah, y'all, we'll take a look at that as well, I'd email it around as well, to see if there's provisions that you own that are outside of the statute that will discuss the, let me know on the special way, to see if there's something that we can do if we're preempted by the state statute.
Okay.
It'll turn into a felony, you know, that's...
Yeah, okay. All right. Let's move down to number 12. This is, we've talked about this the last couple of meetings, and we've got some things that's been put together that y'all can look at between now and the next meeting, as far as, you know, the timeline and all. I mean, we can go ahead, you know, like tonight, let Walter talk, but we got to have something in writing as far as the time goes, three minutes or whatever, you know? And I should give you some stuff here, maybe tomorrow, and you, and you can look at it between now and our next meeting, and we should be able to adopt the guidelines and the rules. You wouldn't think it'd take that long, but you need to really look at, because every county, most counties don't have it, you know, I mean, but the ones that do, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty simple, but you've got to set guidelines in case you've got a really big project going or something, say you've got 50 people here wanting to talk to you, it could take the time up for this work session. We could be here, like that, somewhere they had a seven-hour meeting the other day.
Chattanooga.
Chattanooga, so, you know, we, we're not going, we're not going to go there, you know, but it's going to address that and, and just be fair to the people and unfair, you know, to the, so the time. So anyway, that's what that is. So if y'all, y'all get that, look it over in the next few weeks, and if you want changes and doctrine or whatever, and get ahold of Beck or myself or Robin, and we can change Anything you want to add on that, Phillip or any of you, I mean, it is. The, move down to number 13. This is just an announcement of our special call meeting, it'll be on Tuesday, August the 18th, 2020, at 5:00. This is pertaining to our resolution R-26-20. That's for the collection of the tax for the school board. They should have everything taken care of on their, their tax, the millage rate by then, and what we will be either approving or not approving would be the collection of that. Ms. Moreland collects it for the school system, and we have to agree to do that, you know, so that's what that is. It's just, it'd be a five-minute meeting, probably, or 10 minutes. Normally, we've already taken care of this at our meeting that we had last week, our special call, we would have our meeting at 6:30, they had theirs at 6:00, and we would adopt our millage rate, which we did, and they would come in behind us, but this year, they're going through the process of taking the growth, they're showing us an increase in the collection of the taxes, so they had to advertise a tax increase, so, but, you know, we did not. In fact, our millage rate, we went down on our millage rate a little bit, knock on wood, thank goodness for that, but, so that's what this special meeting is all about, and everyone's invited, you know, it's an open meeting, so that's what it is. Y'all got any questions on that? I know y'all were on board with it, with knowing, okay. All right, let's move down here. Robin, we've got to Wildwood, the hospital, Lifestyle Lane that we talked about, you know, we all agreed on the, pretty much on the abandonment. What, what have you got on that for?
So the first step in the process is the determination by this board that, that the road is no longer needed for a public purpose, and that it's in public interest that it be abandoned. Once, and so I would ask for a motion for that or tonight. Once we do that, the next steps are that we send a certified letter to the adjoining landowners, we publish it in the newspaper for two weeks, a public hearing for two weeks, and then we have a public hearing and then a vote to actually abandon the property. So because it has to go in the newspaper for two weeks, we may want to have a public hearing at 5:45 or whatever, prior to our September meeting.
That'd be good, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that we can get it in time for the other hearing. I've looked at that, but I don't think we can do that. So that'd be my suggestion to you, but we do need to vote tonight to say that it's no longer used for public...
We'll do that, can we do that on the consensus, and are you going to take an open vote or how you?
I think we can do it on the consensus.
Yeah, because that road does not go anywhere, but they're, you know, the adjoining landowners is a mile away probably. I mean, they, they own a lot of land, goes right to the, it really does not serve us at all, I mean, except for that one building, the hospital, you know, so.
That's right.
And they're, they're asking, because, and the reason being, if you're wondering why they wanting to take it over, they've had a lot of issues with people coming in and out up there at night and doing some crazy things, you know, and they've had a lot of things stolen in the last six months, and by rights, you know, that's a government road, they can't stop them and tell them, hey, you know, or can't even question them, what are you doing here, you know? And it's, it goes directly into the hospital now, so I can see their point, you know, and so, and I know Lamar, he's been on board with, he's been, talked to him and all, so. Well, that's what we'll do then, you know, tonight, if you want to go ahead and put it, if everybody's fine with it, we'll put it on the consensus.
Fine, good.
Okay, all right. Alex, you want to come on up and go with this, quick, with this?
I had one thing real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Chris just texted me and said he would accept that position, special use permit.
Uh, go ahead and put him back on the, Chris Bradford, yeah, for the lookout mountain post, yeah. That's two more, two down, three really.
You got, yeah, Alan Towns, that's already on there.
Yep, he's, we already, yeah.
Right, thank you, Commissioner, for letting us come up, and as you all know, we were awarded a letter, or were given a letter, all city and county leaders, mayors and executives of the COVID CARES Act funding that can be returned for use of COVID supplies, enhancements to our county to protect several things.
Alex, tell them, tell everybody out there that's listening, a lot of people, tell them where this money come from originally, it's federal, you know, and it comes...
It's all federal money, the US, you know, our federal government issued money to each state to pick up from March 1st, when COVID started, and are going until December the 30th, and there's expenses that we have expensed to date at the end of July. Rebecca, myself, we've been working diligently with this portal system that they're with, and we're getting so, of our, everything we personally buy besides, besides our day-to-day budget, to date, we're about $43,000 out of part of 19, or part of 20, and going into 21 budget. As of July, we were $43,000 of that budget, so we got part of the month in our new budget. So we've got to look at, this money helps us reimburse that. We've actually got two grants. We've got a federal declaration through JIMA, through emergency management, that we were awarded, and then we got the CARES Act funding that we can get procurements and fix facilities. If you've been in our commission office, City Hall, any of these things, you're going to see these spit guard protectors, you're going to see tables and chairs and plants where we're blocking the free flow into these facilities. That is a allowable expense with the CARES Act funding. Dade County was awarded $731,035 to be used by December 30th.
And that's straight grant money, that's not matching.
Straight grant.
That's straight grant, but we've got to get on the ball here, that's what he's going to explain to you now.
The first 30%, $219,311, has to be obligated or spent by the end of this month.
That's right.
September 1. As me and Kerry sat through the hour and 40-minute training session, both of us at different times getting these, there are specific guidelines that is set aside by the, the grant, necessary expenditures and cure due to public health emergency with respect to the COVID-19. We're not accountable for the budget most recently approved as of March 20, and then the period is from March 1, 20, till December 30, 20. Expenses can be emergency medical expenses, including emergency medical transports related to COVID, expenses, acquisition, distribution of medical protective supplies, including sanitation products, personal protective equipment for medical, fire, law enforcement, ever, and other things, expenses for disinfectant public use areas, and we got a lot of them. Courts facility is a big one, that we got some issues here.
Library.
Currently, we're in voting, we go voting next week. A lot of these tables you see, and these are things that we see here, are that we expensed throughout. Now, some through the Secretary of State had funding that was purchased on another grant, so...
$3,000.
$3,000. So Luanne and us have been working, and we split that different ways. Again, we got different account codes that's accounting for that in response to the COVID public health emergencies. You know, expenses for techno assistance and local authorities to enter into mitigation of the COVID-19, how do we mitigate that? We've got our county commission office that's wide open, we want to mitigate that free flow. We've got every office in the court facility, once you meet through security, you, all the offices in there, you just walk in and go. We've got temporary measures where there's, glasses have been replaced in the front, and they got the little work holes, just like these spit shields, and you talk through that. So we're looking at putting lobbies and stuff throughout there to help do that. Expenses for public safety measures undertaken, you know, that's, that's where some of that money that we're looking at to do, and then payroll. Currently for payroll, end in July, we're, for the people that showed symptoms, was told to go home based on the CDC guidelines of COVID, the quarantine time, we're around $16,000 right now. That was the last estimate, or that's a rough estimate from what Mary has pulled from her payroll, and we're working to get that in. We have to have, highlight the areas, because it may just, it could be two different checks of the week, it could be the whole pay period, because we're on two-week periods, we just, we got to work through all that. There's a lot of work, as Don mentioned, the ladies in the office and us, we're working heavily to get this stuff in. But again, we got a deadline on cares by the end of this month, and the other one that goes till the end of the year, but the cares also goes to the end of the year. The 70% after the 30%, we have to submit in for approval based on these guidelines. Tele, tele expenses, teleworking improvement capabilities for public employees, enable compliance with the COVID, that was something we didn't have a lot of. We made purchases, as last month I presented, we had, we purchased laptops way ago, they luckily had come in mid of this, and was able to do some things. Same thing with Don, we sent him home with, with one and done that, and the ones that have work from home are doing, but we, we got to have some more stuff to securely allow them. One of the things is our phones. If we, if we leave our numbers up, our current phone system will not allow that. We looking at upgrade, do that, and that will qualify to upgrade our phone system to advance teleworking outside of our facilities.
But what you're here tonight asking us, I know that this is all informative, and it's just stuff you can give everybody, but just tell us.
But since the timeline is so tight, we've got to move. We have currently worked on the expenses and things that we need to do for the improvements of the safety of this county and the public and the public, our employees. We'd like approval that, as long as it's approved in the CARES Act portal, that Ted, myself, Robert was there one day, we discussed, and Rebecca, once things come up, we just, we're going to have to move quickly, or we're going to have to come back and have a meeting every week on approvals of stuff. We started Monday with contractors looking at this stuff, we have to have it spent or obligated. Obligated could be the contract signed by Ted on this to be done, so we've got to move quickly in that we update you of what the projects are and what the estimates are, where we go that meets these criterias.
So you're asking to, for, for, like, you, myself, and Robert, and...
Or if any one of the commissioners, I know we have to watch...
Well, we can't have three, and, you know...
Yeah, I know, but if they...
Yeah, I mean...
Whatever, at least two commissioners, one commissioner and yourself, and then with me and Rebecca, because we're, you know, she's our bean counter. This money is deposited in our account right now. It was, it was last Friday, it hit our bank account before we can...
But we've got to prove that we, we've got to show that we, that we, we can obligate them, not, you got to send it back, you know, and it's, you know, and that's, that's nothing to do with our property tax, this is money that, this is a win-win here.
So again...
But they put such stipulations on it, and the timeline, it makes you wonder if they really don't, you know, well, a lot of these counties are really squirming, I mean, because, you know, if you, that deadline, and everybody said they're going to hold us to it. If you go over midnight, you know, that's it.
There were some questions sent out today at 4:48 from ACCG, Beth Brown, we were all carbon in it, of guidelines, questions, and funding for this eligibility, and also Governor Kip had Senate Bill 359 that he passed yesterday, that Robin's got to look at that section of it, so we may be able to post some signs in our buildings that takes some of the liability. It was the COVID-19 liability Senate Bill 359. But it's either that, or we're going to have a lot of special call meetings, a lot, and we've got to get some obligation and contract pricing. We've got four or five companies working diligently to get us some pricing, and I'm trying to stripe them pretty quick, but we have to follow our financial procurement process of the, of the tile, of the prices from $250 to $10,000, $10,000 to, and beyond, up to 20, and then we can get three written quotes, three verbal quotes, or if it's so much, you got to go out for RFP, and we don't have a lot of time to RFP. We have to build a project, so the courts facility is a project, this is a project, administration building's a project, library's a project, senior building's a project when it gets back open, other things that we're doing, all that, everything for teleworking and all, but it's a very, once we submit it, get the pricing, we ship it up to submit, the analysts for the State Department of Treasury that's assigned to our group will say approve, go or no. So we have to submit the bids, our procurement process, which is around 18 pages now, our financial policy, and highlight which areas we are based on the total, so I guess Rebecca can admit it's a lot, and we've got to move quickly to secure this funding, and the few projects we talked about, these lobbies, and we got to worry about ceiling tile, HVAC, electrical, things like that, we're not thinking of, we've got contractors in here now giving us some pricing. So right now, with the processes without some of the facial and risk recognition of temperatures to be accessed in the facility, if you've been in our courts facility, the court security is not away from the public, you walk right beside them, we're going to enclose that, and we're using aluminum storefront to make the building and the offices look very nice, nothing cheap, or that will be approved, we want it to make look nice, because this will be here forever. So we're, we're close to $102,000 right now of this $219 from preliminary pricing, I say very preliminary, estimated what they told me, until it's in paper, then we can revisit it, and then we get the contracts and all that, so.
You understand, I'm going to go around the table, you understand what he's asking?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in the consensus of allowing the chairman to make approval, whatever he needs to on this cares.
Do you understand, Phillip, what we've...
All right, so, I think I do, but so the citizens understand, what you're saying is we got a $200-something thousand grant from the federal government that is not a match, it's 100% grant. You're asking us to give Chairman Remley or one other commissioner to be able to look at something and go ahead and approve bids to where we don't have to come back in special call meetings every week to get this done, because we have a short timeframe.
We have a short timeframe for the first 30%, and then we got the other 70% from September to December. September to December. It'll be approved on a per application basis of what we do, but we're going to have to act fast.
But before we spend the money, it has to go through their process and get approved, and then we can spend it.
Has to meet our, has to meet our finance policy.
Right.
I think it's page five, section, I can't remember what it was, and then they have to approve it as the Department of Treasury of Georgia analyst. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
There's going to be more than just CNN, but it's a group of people, it's, I mean.
We're, we're actually going to all departments, we're looking at portable sanitation devices, ballfields, games, portables we can set out during the games they come in, as they walk up to the concession stands, I've been talking with Stacy and we're, we got to get out of our mind, but some of this stuff has got to go now.
Exactly.
It has to be, we thought about this stuff in the beginning, but how are we going to pay for it?
That's right.
Then the CARES Act money come out early. We got a, uh, appointment January 29th, and they're telling us to have it done by September 1st. We didn't have the money to do a lot of this stuff, what we did of that 44,000 was on declaration, and it's been submitted. So we've got to make some commitments or spent by the end of this month. Now, ACC and GMA are pushing hard to move that back a little bit because we got the money so late. Tons of questions, called in several times, ACC and GMA, they take the questions, send it to the Department of Treasury. GMA's getting involved, they've been through some of the training too. Me and Rebecca's minds are running wide open thinking what we can do, because you read it one thing, well, my way's this way and their way now may not be that, so. We're just want to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's and try to get the best for the county in the future if this continues to go. But it, you think about other sicknesses that it may, uh, just their common cold or the flu, A or B or plus COVID, and, you know, we're looking at, uh, there's still their estimate and more sickness by the end of the fall when our sick season gets here. Our schools going back as well, and we have the opportunity to help them too, but we got to take care of Dade County first. And that's our biggest, um, amount of people in buildings is our schools. They have had monies for some of their stuff, but this thermal face recognition thing, we're looking at and some seek things that'll do a group of people when they stand in specific areas, they let them go, so we got some preliminary pricing on that for them, uh, but we're going to see what we can do.
Robert, you understand?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion, the best.
Well, we can, we're going to put it on the consent agenda.
I'm going to put it on Ted, let him, because he's here all day, every day, and he can make that decision, not have to.
Well, it'll be, it'll be, uh.
I'd rather make the motion somewhat like this, that we allow Chairman Romney.
Yes.
And any one other commissioner who can sit in.
Yeah.
If you're here, I'm here every day and that's three men, I know you two.
He sat in with us, yeah.
But if I'm here and Phillip comes in and wants to come in here, or any two commissioners, if the chairman is absent for sickness or something, he can't be there, we got to go and sign with the gun.
Yeah, we've also brought some stuff for transportation in July, public transportation, a whole shield that covers the driver that they get in and out of in case someone's in there. And another grant come in from that on that public transportation that's going to help fund that whole budget. We usually get half of that and we figure, but budget the other half with sales tax, I mean, property tax.
Oh, yeah.
So we're, we're, we're getting some things in and doing for that as well. So really, we're druggling, we're juggling three grants of cares funding plus the RFP of the, um, storm shelters. So remember, when this money comes in, you're going to start seeing the totals go up, so, you know, public, remember, we're not, our budget's not that big, we're, we're getting 700,000 here, 1.2 million in, in, um, the funding for the, um, then we get reimbursed 85% of that, of that, and plus the storm thing for the transportation, another 373, so it's going to be a rough audit here for our CPAs.
So do we need to make a motion on that or we don't?
No, we didn't.
Consent agenda.
Uh, this consent, can't make a motion, we're not in our meeting yet, but this can go on the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
And that's, we just can't, we got the consensus of everybody, so.
Those guys work a lot and they're not here, but Robert and I can be here within 10 or 15 minutes if needed.
Well, I think each one of the departments, as we talk to them, think about things in the future, you know, our big public areas, our, our softball season for girls softball's coming up right now, uh, that we need to, that's some of the things we're looking at. So we're diligently, diligently getting prices, staying with our federal procurement, getting them purchased, once they approve it, we're going to pay them, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Alex. Uh, anyone got any other comments on anything? If not, we'll go ahead and.
I think what Robert stated was fine with me.
Yeah, that's good, that way everybody, you know, and, uh, so, just, I don't know how you're going to word that exactly, but you can handle it, I know, just, just do that and put that on the consent agenda. All right, if y'all don't have anything else, we'll go ahead and adjourn the, uh, the work session. Robin, you got anything else? You got anything?
We did forget, overlooked one thing about the veterans part, but then we'll just wait till next month.
You want, you want to mention it, yeah?
Oh, well, can we, can we amend the agenda this late?
Well, we're not going to vote on it anyway.
You can amend it, yeah.
Well, let's add this, you'll go ahead and add that.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, just.
We, we talked about the, Fireman had asked for.
Jerry Kaiser, yeah.
Jerry Kaiser had asked for a place to put a statue out there on the gazebo area, and we had concerns that that had been dedicated to the veterans memorial part. But after what Robin has sent us, the meetings, you and Alan made the motions, and my dad was on the, the chairman at the time, what he actually said was that that would be a asset to our part, the veterans memorial valuable asset. So after everything's been gathered up, I personally feel like it's not the whole park, it's not the veterans memorial park, it's that section where the monuments are at.
Well, that's the way, well, you know, I was one that made the motion on it back in 2001.
You was?
And what we, what we were, what we did was give them that section a pie of that part to let them, where the flags are at and actually the monument and everything, and that little, that little section is there, you know, to actually, they keep up, they keep it up, they keep the flag changed, they keep the bricks changed, but the rest of the park is a county, you know? And so that's, that's the way it was, you know, that's originally, that was.
Yeah, we couldn't have no monuments, so high, remember, we had to have a height.
That meeting actually was, um, in the old building.
Yeah, it was.
It was in, we didn't even have this building finished, we were working on it, but.
I was there.
Yeah, yeah.